Red bar graph. We are not yet where we were back in May and June, early June of this year, but we do continue that steady decline and that is really reassuring. As expected, there is also a steady decline in the number of deaths that we are seeing. There was an anomaly yesterday in the number of deaths reported two days ago. However, for the most part, the deaths have also continued to study decline. So that is also reassuring. We can move to the next slide. So the next slide looks at our dashboard. So looking at the cases across the country, we have about 20 cases of COVID for every 1,000 individuals. That puts us at about one in every 50 individuals that have gotten COVID at one point or another across the country. Texas has 23 cases for every 1,000 people. So we're above the average of the country. Tri-county area looks to be about 18.5. And if you extrapolate Brewster County out of the tri-county population, we're actually well above it. We're at about 25 cases out of every 1,000 individuals. And looking at testing, we can only continue to find cases if we have robust testing. And testing across the country, we have 278 tests for every 1,000 people. Texas has fallen to the ninth worst state in testing. We were holding steady about the 13th worst state in testing and we've slowly slid to 10th and then now 9th. We're doing about 206 tests for every 1,000 people. Tri-county, we're doing well above that. We're doing about 300 tests for every 1,000 people. So that has been really robust testing and I hope we do continue to do that. Looking at the 232 current, and we're actually at 233 now, cases for Brewster County, there are 16 active cases that we are monitoring and there are three deaths. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so looking at those 233 cases, the top left-hand corner graph shows the ages of all of our COVID positive individuals. The most prominent increase is in our 10 to 19-year-old age group. That has increased quite a bit as well as our 20s age group. We do have quite a few cases currently in Sol Ross. And if you look at our top right-hand corner dashboard, starting from when we first had our outbreak in June, you can see once we got over that outbreak, we had a small surge in towards the end of July. And then we flattened out quite a bit, almost to nothing. And then we have had another surge that's outlined in red dashed lines. And if you look at the bottom center graph, you, I pulled out the number of active cases over the last 20 days and I'm showing you where we've been. I'm just blowing that section up. So we are currently at somewhere around, we've been hovering between about 13 to 16 cases for the most part. And what's interesting is that as some of the older cases recover, it is, we're finding some new cases in the community. So it's almost replacing it. And that's why we've almost plateaued for such a long time. As, as somebody recovers and falls out of the active cases count, somebody else comes in and we find somebody else who's positive. So that's where we're at. We, as you can see, still have not hit our downhill slope. We have not had a steady decline yet. Hopefully that will come soon. But nothing quite yet. And if you want to go down to the next slide. As always, I have the five key metrics. There's a lot of schools of public health, including Johns Hopkins, Brown, Duke, that have put together some goals for us to follow, for to know that we're doing a good job. And this outlines that. And if you go to the next, my last slide, I actually made it really easy to look at these metrics. So it actually looks at our Brewster County metrics and looks at what our goals are and which ones we meet and we don't meet. So currently we are meeting two out of the five, which is not great. We currently have 0% occupancy in our ICU, which is good. That means we have beds available and ready to use if we do need ICU beds available for patients. In terms of our new and active infections, the goal is to have less than four active infections at any given point in time. And as you saw, we have 16, so a lot higher than what we would like. The reproduction rate of COVID across the state is 0.85, which is good. You want it to be less than one. We don't have the ability to see this at a local level, but I bet we're right at one, if not slightly above that. Given the fact that we do have a plateaued number of cases, we're not seeing a decline in our cases, but we're sitting pretty flat. So for every one individual that has COVID, they're giving it to about one other individual, hence the plateau. We're not going up, but we're not going down either. The testing positivity rate, so whenever we do testing across our county, what we would like to see is less than 5% of those tests come back positive. And what we are currently seeing is out of the last 47 tests that were done across our county, across all the clinics and hospital, from September 3rd to 9th, 17% came back as positive. So that is significantly higher than that 5% positivity rate. So we do want to do a lot of testing, but have most of the tests come back negative. And then our last metric is those number of tests. What's our goal number of tests for us to be doing? Then our goal is about 198 tests across the tri-county area. And last week we hit 170. We didn't have mobile testing coming through the area. So we were relying mainly on our clinics and our hospital testing across all three counties. So it got us up to 170, so almost at our goal, but not quite there. That's all, that's all I have. Oh, let me mention Sol Ross really quickly. I know I had mentioned that before. So we do have about 16 active cases in Brewster County and about half of those cases are coming out of Sol Ross. And the way we're doing this, and we are going a little bit outside of what DSHS wants us to, or what they're doing, what their policy is. For college students, the problem becomes that their permanent address is often not at the, at the university. Their permanent address is wherever their parents live. Although for every, for all intents and purposes, those students really live here. They live here, the grocery shop here, they eat at restaurants here. So when looking at an infection, even though DSHS reports those cases as being at their permanent residence and that whatever county that is, we feel that it makes sense to include those numbers in Brewster County numbers. So we are, our numbers are going to be a little bit off from what DSHS reports just because we feel it's much more practical to include those numbers in Brewster County metrics. So there is going to be a little bit of a discrepancy, but we do feel it's really important to, for, for the community to be, to be aware of, of these students. And they're part of our community anyway.
I know last call, we talked a little bit about, you know, how do we get more testing, right? And I think when we look at the testing positivity rate and then of course, the, the average tri-county weekly testing, where we're a little, little bit of below that 200 number a week. And I know we talked about that a little bit earlier on the CV team call this morning, that the state is trying to maneuver or manage the testing down. On the DSHS call this evening, are you going to be able to speak to that a little bit more to try to help bring in, you know, some more regular testing with the mobile units?
Yeah, we've definitely been really pushing for them to come back and really stressing that we are a rural county and rural area in general. And we don't have a lot of that infrastructure built in or capability built in if the mobile testing does not come through. The mobile testing has currently been relegated to areas that are still showing very high numbers. And I know our numbers are really high, but there are a lot of counties that are struggling a little bit more than we are. So they've been kind of relegated to help with mobile testing in those areas. We are looking to have them come back to us soon. And I'll, I'll definitely speak to that on tonight's phone call with them.
Yeah, because I think people feel very comfortable going to that mobile test unit as well. So, you know, beyond just scheduling the appointment with the doctor, right? They know the testing's going to occur and they can show up and get it done.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Doctor, on the numbers that the DHS gives you with the students at Sol Ross, they're not counting, counting them as part of Brewster. It kind of gives folks a false sense about how many cases we really have. And these folks are potential carriers. Shouldn't be excluding them from our area or any other area. You know, this is where they reside, anywhere from three and a half months to, you know, to seven months a year. So is there any reason why they do that?
It's just to streamline and make sure that we are not counting somebody two times across the state. So if you think about all of the universities we have across the state and, you know, if everybody counted them locally, but then they also got counted wherever their permanent residence is, that would make it really difficult. And especially right now, a lot of universities are offering online only classes, more so than normal. So some of these kids are sitting at home in their permanent address and are not physically at the university. So even though they're enrolled at a university, they may not be there in person. And so it makes it really confusing. So they wanted to stick to one standardized way that they report these cases so that there's not any confusion and we're not counting anybody twice. And I understand that, but I think for us, like I said, Brewster County, if you look at their dashboard, we're going to have a lot less cases than 16 because they're not counting any Sol Ross student that's not a Brewster County resident in terms of their permanent residency. So I do think it's important for us to count them. Now, the only Sol Ross students we're not counting are any students that may not live in the county. For example, if it's a student in Marfa and they commute to Sol Ross for their classes and then leave. So their temporary address and their permanent address are both not in Brewster County. We're not counting them because again, they're not really spending time in our county very much. So we're not counting them, but we are counting anybody who, you know, they live in our dorms and, and/or they live at home in a Brewster County residence with their family.
Yeah, this is Rick. I would say just looking at the Brewster County website right now, they're reporting 17, because I had heard one today when I was down at the county offices. They're reporting 17 active cases. And even if you exclude the Sol Ross, which is half, I think ACTA, we're still well above our four. So the metric still shows up red. To me, that's the real indicator.
Yes, absolutely.
Dr. Escobar, this is Ramon. A question or comment and also a question to, for your professional opinion. I noticed that on the national news and also regional news, there's a hinting right now that people should consider going in for their flu shots and/or pneumonia shots. That this may be a, a good way of helping to build the immunological resistance to COVID as well. I checked with my own personal provider. They said in a couple of weeks, they will have vaccines in, so I'm, I'm going to prepare. What do you think about? Do you think what is being recommended is useful for people to consider?
Yes, I think so. So one of the, there's two things to consider. At this point, we have seen a lot of COVID in our community and we are not yet in the time of the year where we have a heavy viral respiratory season. We're, we're heading into that season. So you can just imagine how bad COVID can get when you superimpose just even regular colds, flus, a lot of other respiratory symptoms and respiratory infections on top of COVID. So the last thing we want is to head into a season and not take precautions, not give yourself layers of protection where you can. There's not a lot we can do in terms of vaccines for COVID, but there are things we can do for the other viral things that we see in the winter. So absolutely, of all the times to get your flu vaccine, we're definitely getting into a season that this is the time to really try to do it. The other thing is that we have, the US has not yet seen what we, what will happen if somebody gets, let's say flu and COVID at the same time. What are your chances of coming out of that versus dying if you have a lot of infections? Sorry, a lot of infections at the same time. And so you want to give yourself any protection, you know, you can. And so I think it is going to be really important for, for individuals to do that. And you can get flu shots as soon as you're six months old and older. So I do think it's going to be really important. And then for our adults, I'm a pediatrician, but for adults, there's also the pneumovax, the pneumonia vaccine. So if you qualify for that, that's definitely something to consider getting as well.
Thank you. Doctor, can you comment whether there's going to be sufficient room available in the Brewster County area?
So I can tell you, I've been here seven years now and I can tell you, we run out of flu shots in our clinic every winter. Some, some years we run out by Thanksgiving. Some years we, you know, run out and then we, you know, we get sent some more and we run out again and get sent some more and we straggle along until maybe about January. But there has yet to be a single year where we make it through the entire winter with plenty of flu shots for everybody. And that just happens on a regular year. I do think there's going to be a rush for flu shots across the country and definitely across the world as we go through our flu season. And so I don't see us being able to make it through a flu season and not have shortages. I think all of our clinics are going to run out, just like we do any year and probably sooner this year. I know all of the clinics, we've been talking about it as physicians and we've all ordered extras and anticipated a slightly higher demand, but I do think we're going to run out.
Yeah, because I understand that y'all place your order in December or January for this timeframe right now.
Yes, so as, as we're coming out of one flu season, we are already placing our order for the following year. So we look at the number of flu shots we give in one winter and then we estimate how many we're going to need for the following year and place our order. And at least in our clinic, we've been increasing the number by 10% every year. And every year we still run out. Now, there's also times that we order, let's say 300 doses and we only get sent, you know, 200 or 250, just because that's what the manufacturer has. And so we don't always get our full order met either. So there's a lot of logistical things that go into this in a normal year, in a normal flu season. And, and like I said, with the COVID pandemic, it's going to cause a lot more strain. So I fully expect that if you, I advise that if you are interested in getting your flu vaccine, then do it sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Any more questions for the doctor? Okay, thank you very much, doctor. Very informative.
Yep, thanks. You've got two minutes to spare before your next meeting. Thank you. Hey, Gio, we talk on the next slide. So Mayor and City Council, I'm going to go through the rest of the city manager report. And then we've got, as I shared earlier today, two, two staff reports. Really wanted to focus today a lot on our goals and objectives. You know, something that, you know, we started with in September of last year was 180-day plan. And then in March, we refreshed that to really more of this initiatives, priorities and challenges and broke that down, you know, across our different departments and disciplines here at the city. You know, I worked back with our team on updating that. So as, as we come through September and into the fall season, we'll be going after these initiatives and priorities. That being said, post this meeting today, I'll work with Gio. Really want to update on our city website, on the city manager page, reflection of that 180-day plan and then the March 2020 and then September 2020. That way folks can kind of see the progression and know philosophically what we're working on from a staff perspective. You know, one of the other, I think, real key things, and you can go down to the next slide, Gio, is, you know, our leadership training, the work that we're doing there across our department heads and our supervisors to really help them develop on their communication skills, both with employees as well as with our citizens in the community and back with council and other elected officials. So those are things that I think our team has really embraced and super proud of the work they're doing there. But it still is a priority of ours. And, you know, when we think about, and I'm not going to go through and read all of these verbatim to you. I, I, I'm not one of reading every bullet point on a, on a PowerPoint, but I am going to hit certainly the highlights. You know, community engagement is, is very important from an administration perspective. I think the coffee with the city manager has been well received by citizens. I think the chat with the chief has been well received. Something even that Scott Perry and I are talking about, you know, how do we start doing things like tours of maybe our wastewater treatment plant or tours of some of our capture facilities? In that way, citizens who are elected officials who are interested, we can continue to help engage in, in the construction components of the city and how we run. So certainly that community engagement will continue to be a high threat. You know, layering down into finance, you know, Megan and I talk a lot about transparency. How do we get information out on the website? You know, once again, that's that whole communication theme, right? So how do we ensure not only that our council is aware, but our citizens are acutely aware of how we're spending money? Certainly this year, when you think about all the work that's going on in the streets, it's more apparent to people on where their tax dollars are going. But we, we certainly take a lot of interest in making sure that our citizens are aware of how we're spending money. You know, one, one of the challenges that certainly we've identified is on the RFP side. You know, how clear and concise are we on the RFPs that we deliver? And how do we ensure that we're getting as many responses as possible? Because, you know, part of being where we're at in West Texas, right? We don't have as deep a pool of vendors. And so working back with all of our departments on how we perfect that and get the best pricing and the best quality of service back for city and the work that we're doing. You know, thinking about grants. Thinking about grants, you know, Marcy Tuck is a real superstar. I think one of the funny things is when you bring somebody in to work on grants and they start getting traction on it, then they take what's, what's this part-time position? And then do we, do we ladder that into something full-time because of all the, the work and energy that we're doing? But I think, you know, effectively when we talk about what we're doing relative to the CDBG, relative to our parks and relative to our police, she's really zeroed in on that. The other thing that I like from a communication perspective is that she's working effectively back with the other governing entities, the school district as well as many other, to ensure we have their support on the programs that, that we're working towards. So next slide, please, Gio.
Eric, we.
Sure. Go ahead, Ramon.
Before moving on, I noticed, first of all, congratulations on the initiative dealing with being a bit more transparent with the public funds and how they're being used. I think that's a tremendous idea in to allow our residents to know where the funding and how much is being used to, for improvements, for education, et cetera, for the benefit of our residents. Good job.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, but super, super important and thank you for pointing that out, Ramon. You know, moving forward with our police and animal control, Chief Martin's divisions, you know, a lot of what, if you remember what he outlined in his 180-day plan, was really around training and development. And I think the work that he and Captain LaSoya are working on through the leadership training and then some of our hires, when we think about how we develop our cases, how we do our reporting, you know, all of that has been part of that journey that he's been working through. You know, as I mentioned earlier too, he does the chat with the chief out there and really working on having a strong open door policy. You know, some of the challenges certainly with COVID, right? So we layered a different type of work on our police team, on our animal control. Whereas they're that first person in the field that's dealing with an individual. You know, how do we make sure that they are following good practice, setting a good example in the community? So that they'll continue to, to work through that. I think as Dr. Escobar talked about, through the fall, as we think about healthcare practices to the community. You know, animal control, Jennifer's been with us for a long time. And I really think that she's stepping up her game. We saw that in her last presentation, but really noodling heavy into the policies and procedures. And then the training, you know, how does she continue to develop that layer below with her team? So I think part of, part of what we're doing from a leadership perspective is, is helping give, give her some of those tools. Because once again, you know, animal control officer is out there in the field working with our citizens in the community on, on issues relative to pets and animals. And so, you know, how we, we work well and effectively with the community is super important. Next slide, please, Gio. Thinking with our water, wastewater sanitation, recycling, that, that group or Fund Four, as we sometimes call them, when Scott Perry joined the team. In fact, when I came back to the city, you know, the, the city had just made some, some major purchases for the wastewater treatment plant and that capital improvement out there was, was certainly very important. I did a tour of the facility about a week and a half ago. Really, really pleased with the work that Mike Macias, Rich Wiley are doing out there. And we've made some substantive improvements with our clarifiers, oxidation ditches, belt press, getting solids out. And we've still got to finish that aerator project. We should, and Scott's going to report out on the October 6th meeting, but that's a big deal for us, if, if you remember. And so those capital projects will stay front and center. Obviously, our SCADA improvements and what we're trying to do with our SCADA system that spans both water, wastewater, you know, is important. We've finally been able to get some testing going again with our employees so they can ladder up and get certifications. You know, we're looking at with our hires, how do we help them see this as a longer-term career? And getting additional certifications helps them perform better and helps us retain them for, for longer periods of time. Of course, sanitation, recycling. You know, big trucks are a big question mark for me on our streets because the bigger the truck, the heavier there are, the more destruction they have on the work that Eddie and his teams are doing. So we've got to think through that in our contractual negotiations this next year. And also how we handle things like bulky trash pickup. Got a lot of illegal dumping that still occurs. You know, how do we put process and procedure in place to help eliminate that? I think at our recycle plant and the work that Adalina Bell is doing, she's just been phenomenal. She's working on this great project with Sol Ross relative to Coconut Lodge, Poets Grove, how we reuse affluent water and how we really help that area out there. So very pleased with the proactive and positive work. And once again, you know, this is our team members creating these goals and working back with other departments and other entities across the city. Next slide, please, Gio. And then I couldn't jam the gas one up on that utility slide. It'd be too much of an eye chart, but you know, Randy, when he reported out a couple sessions ago with Scott and Johnny, and I think that real focus on what they're doing with leak surveys, the capital, you know, once again, it's that capital improvement. How do we get more steel pipe out and more of the poly pipe in? And then I think the other thing, you know, when we talk about communication, right? Is that community awareness. Something that our gas department's always done is had these kind of open houses when we get to the fall and they talk about 811. How do we talk about damage prevention? Get a lot of handy people across the community that are putting in a fence, putting in a tree and we don't want them to, to clip their gas line and create some sort of challenge, major safety issues. So those, you know, as we move forward, those are our continued priorities for us. I, I don't know if our capital will ever go away, our capital expenditures along our utilities. But once again, you know, when we think about how we discuss and communicate that back with the community, when they see the work that's being done, that really resonates. You know, moving forward to David Hale's team, what we're doing around the building and code enforcement. Obviously, David is a, is a pro at his vocation. He really knows the codes. And beyond that, you know, we talk about how do we best communicate with our constructors and our vendors in the community? And beyond that, you know, we talk about how do we best communicate with our constructors and our vendors in the community and ensure that they understand what the ordinances are? And and then when their challenge is, how do we work back with council for updates on things? So, you know, an item would be like food trucks, you know, we're getting more and more food trucks wanting to come here. So he's he's off working. You know, how do we look at that from a city perspective? Something for for council to really delve into as well. And and then, you know, I I think about our master plan for zoning. How do we lay out the city? If you look at it right now, it's somewhat checkerboardish. And this is the big, big item from a planning and zoning perspective. But I I believe that with David's leadership and what we have on our planning zoning commission, we can really start tackling that this fall. And then, of course, on our code enforcement, we've seen and had a lot of recent discussions relative to the different primary codes out in the field, Section 54, Section 82 of our code of ordinances, how we administrate that on the field and think about accountability within the community and those impacts. And so part of part of what we're trying to do, too, is communicate well back. So we've been working through some updates on our software. And how do we get meaningful reports that come back to council? So we can see how many different types of code violations we have over certain periods of time. Can we delineate those across, you know, the different wards of the city if if needed? So that's part of the project work that, you know, David and I are are working through right now. Really, software is a service. Next slide, please. And when we move forward to Eddie's team, you know, our streets and parks. You know, of course, Eddie talked last meeting, their meeting before about, you know, how do we get over 100 blocks seal coded and then some? But he, you know, he's also PMing and working with Lance Jarrett. And although Lance is just a professional and he's really, really talented at getting things done, that combined with with a lot of work that we're trying to do on the potholes. When I was taking the trash out this weekend, I did have a neighbor stop and say how pleased he was as he goes through the city, he's a big walker. And, you know, how many streets are being completed? With that being said, we've got to keep that emphasis on it. And we certainly appreciate council's support in this upcoming budget because that will be important for us to execute on, not only for the next six months as we prepare for the next paving season, but then as we execute in 2021. Certainly, you know, I think about equipment, you know, breakdowns or slowdowns for Eddie. So how do we continue to make sure the work that Ruben's doing to keep chains out there working? But then we're replacing equipment on a on an as needed basis. So that's part of what Eddie and I are working on and working back with Megan right now on, you know, how we best spend those dollars to ensure that we get a good, good product there.
Comment on that before you move on, city manager. I think I I shared this with you that a mayor commented on how well our streets look. And he wanted to know where we were getting funds from that. Says, we're just being fiducially responsible for this. And we're covering more streets than that. And also received a compliment just the other day from the father at the Greek Orthodox Church and a number of people that I've run into since I've been back on how well the street. And Sunday I ran to some folks from Arizona that flew in on, there's like 12 of them that fly in every. And they also commented on how well our city looks with the streets, alleys and whatnot. So kudos to you and to Eddie and his crew and Jared Construction Company for doing a fine job out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Really, really good team there and certainly appreciate the work they're doing.
So Eric, with the with the rain that we got and kind of the slowdown, Eddie and and Lance may not get everything done. Is the strategy just roll those funds so the next year? Just trying to understand what the game plan is so we council can make sure we're supportive.
Yes, so we will continue to pave into the end of October, although the fiscal year will will stop September 30. We'll take a snapshot at that at the end of the year. We'll look backwards and see how much of what we committed in this fiscal year we spent. Anything that's below that would certainly be, you know, additional money that we still have in our fund balance.
Yeah.
Then we'll manage through that this next year.
Okay. Thank you.
We we do want to pave to the end of October, though. We've got, you know, certainly Lance has just got those three blocks to tidy up and he's got another project to work on for us. But Eddie's got 25 blocks queued up right now that he's looking to seal coat and checking. I think there may be some some weather tomorrow, but hopefully we'll get back on track before the end of the week.
Thanks.
Yeah, and and then on Parkside, you know, really good staff there. I think the master parks plan really outlined a lot of what we think about from a capital perspective. Marcy's out chasing those dollars for us. But then I think internally, the work that Robert Yanis is doing with his staff, keeping them out there, working on proactive projects even when it rains. So I think that's that's an important thing. You know, one of the other pieces that, you know, Robert's really working on is the irrigation competency within his staff. So he's got some good players, but you know, we need to do some additional training there. Next slide, please. And then finally, you know, we think about our our airport. We've talked quite extensively recently about the two main projects, the Seal Code as as well as the lighting project and the AWOS that we need to get done as well. That's already up on Tech Dot's priority plan. You know, these are are, we'll continue to to petition back for the state to get those 9010 funds and remediate some of that aging infrastructure. But I think more importantly, how do we, how do we really start attracting more people to land and buy fuel from us? And so that's work in front of us. We we are got an employee there who's close to retirement. And, you know, how do we actively find new supervisor that can drive some of the needs for the future? So Scott and I are actively working on that right now. Tourism visitor center, super pleased with the work that Chris and Heather are doing. I think the, you know, all of the safety elements relative to coronavirus. And then how do you layer that back into event planning? You know, and preparing for events, whether it's a pandemic or a non pandemic in context. Very, very pleased with the work they're doing there. One of the things that we've noticed has popped up is continued short term rental properties. And so how do we go back through and relook at those and make sure those folks are signing up, paying their hotel occupancy tax and realizing the benefits of all the promotion and advertising and marketing that we're doing? And then, of course, you know, our municipal court. I think, you know, a lot of what we've certainly had with Lorena this year is that training and development. And then how do you work the cases through the system, make sure we we clear out old case files? We've seen a little bump in her eyes, and so I know she's identified as making sure we don't want to get back into having longer period or a higher volume of of older case files. And then certainly, you know, how we work on our relationships back with all of the different entities that support the municipal court and interact with the municipal court. She is, Lorena is part time as an employee. You know, at one point, we did have a full time employee over there. But she does balance between being part time there and part time human resources. So I think as we work through some of our spatial changes that that are on our roadmap with spacing employees out, we'll be able to bring back the municipal judge as well as the court clerk to City Hall. And that will help some some of the efficiency that she needs as well. So we're excited about that. Any questions on the initiatives, priorities, challenges?
Yes, Eric, I have a a suggestion for maybe the next 180 days or or future initiative plans. As we look at the airport as again to to sort of try to come up with some sort of strategic or long term plan effort as to where we want the airport to be in, let's say, 10 years or 20 years. And what services it can top to provide for the interest of all residents of Alpine. There's something to consider.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I think it's good. Good topic of discussion for our airport advisory board as well, who's getting back and meeting and in talking about that. We've got a good active board out there as well. So thank you. Good. Any other questions on that? Otherwise, we'll jump down to slide 15. All right, without any further ado, new event, I know we hinted at it last meeting, the midweek music and mercantile event, Wednesday evenings. Be an outdoor type event where we allow for selling of goods as well as food truck, close down Third Street. Have some music out there. And a lot of other communities across the US are doing these types of events. It it's a way of thinking through helping some of your businesses drive more commerce, but do it in, you know, more safe and friendly ways. And Heather is a great event planner and organizer. And when we gave her this idea, she ran with it. If you look down to the next slide for me, Gio, we'll see it just kind of general layout, closing Third Street, having music at the the visitor center. But then we've already got, you know, three food trucks right adjacent to that, but inviting other food trucks in that want to participate as well as allowing, you know, vendors, tables, things like that to come in. And we'll run this target first date is September 30. And then see how it goes into late October, early November. And we anticipate we'll we'll have good response from us. Excited about it. And on the city manager's side, that's all I have. If there's any questions for me, be glad to answer. Otherwise, we'll jump down to Stephanie's report.
Can you hear me?
Here you are.
Hi. Gio, you can skip to that one. And this is just more for your information so you can see what our utility connections and usage is for the past four months. You can see September's not in there because our billing cycle is a month behind. So September is not over with. Gas versus water, you could see the the connections on both, looks like we're dropping a little bit, but consumption and water has gone up. As we see the colder months, we'll see the gas consumption go back up as well. You can go to the next slide, Gio. These are our current projects that we're working on in the utility billing. First and foremost, we are working on account audits. I know Megan has spoken briefly about this. It it's a big deal. We're going through each and every account to make sure that they are up to utility ordinance as far as the active accounts that are being billed within city limits, gas, sorry, excuse me, water, garbage, sewer. We are verifying if we come across an active account that's not being billed according to ordinance. We are sending a field technician out there to verify why, why are they not getting billed water? Why are they not getting billed sewer? Andy, I know you're familiar with this one.
Oh, yeah.
So we do have a few customers that do have wells still and some that do have septic. We just want to verify and document each one of those for the auditors. Also, if they are outside city limits, we want to make sure we put them as such because their their rates are a little higher than inside city limits. Disconnections for non payment. So we're coming back from COVID. We did. We didn't disconnect people during this pandemic, but we are coming back from it. We have a few people that have been a little behind. So we do have payment plans in place for those that are affected by COVID who have rather high bills that they're just trying to, you know, keep up. This has actually been working out really well. I did run reports today and most people that we have on payment plans, they're making their regular payment. They're just grateful that we're cutting them a break. So most of them have already paid off their their accounts and they are current and up to date. So you can see over here, I know Erica showed you this chart, this is our this is what we're going to be doing for the next several months until January. So we're in September, we will be doing disconnections for three months. People who are three months behind. And then starting in October, it will be two months, two months. And then in January, we will go back to the one month disconnections. And we're also working with Purdue to collect on delinquent water and gas inactive accounts with balances. Gio, can you go to the next slide, please? So when the water adopted the assist software that the gas was using, the conversion was not clean and left false inactive accounts with balances. So we, during the in house auditing, we are looking at those inactive accounts as well. We're going through each and every one of them. There's probably about 5,000 accounts total, so this will take some time to go through all of them. As we're going through them, we can set the cycle to an actual inactive account with a balance to make a cleaner list so that we can transfer that over to Purdue, who will attempt to collect on these debts. Any questions? Go to the next one, please. And these are some of our completed projects. We do have the DocuSign e-signature utility forms up and running on our website. The customer can actually fill out, you can see like an example right here. Can fill out the forms online, which will directly email the utility clerks. And once we complete it, it will send a copy to the customer. So both parties involved have copies of all signed forms, which is, which is a big deal. Less paperwork also. So that's, that's exciting.
Good work on that.
Yeah. Gio deserves props for this one because we we did take some courses together to figure out how to get this up online and he's he's been a huge help.
I thought it was interesting that within two hours of you going live, you had your first application completed, so.
Right, yeah, as soon as we got it up, we started getting people filling out these forms, which is great. Like I said, less paperwork. Not, not so much human contact.
But I think it gives a good paper trail, too, and and those are things that that customers are looking for, you know, when they come sign up for services. Then we have an accurate record of when they signed up. So thank you. Working with Gio on that.
Oh, you're welcome. Also, the DocuSign is really great because we do have a few customers that kind of skip over a few things and don't sign a couple of pages. And this actually makes them fill it out before it sends it to us. So everything is completed before it gets to us. Also completed projects, the cash handling training. Megan and Griselle, accounts receivable, have provided written and oral cash handling that says handing, but that's okay. And cash verification, cash verification training for the customer service clerks. So all three of us have been trained and up to date with the new finance cash handling training, excuse me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go to this next one, please. Thank you. And these are our departmental goals. We are working on cross-training. Susan, who is now in our water department, she will be eventually switching over to the gas so she can be more familiar with how the gas side of things work. And Diana will be moving back to water so she can get that refreshment on the water side. We're, I'm also going to be, excuse me. Training the customer service clerks additional duties and daily tasks will allow for advancement in their positions. So a lot of what I do. I am going to be creating templates and guidelines for each duty and task that I perform so that these girls can learn. And for future customer service clerks. Can learn very detailed instructions on what it is exactly that I do. In case, you know, I get hit by a car tomorrow. Anyway, so. Starting with. So it just.
Stephanie, you got, you got some really bad feedback.
Yeah, I have a huge echo. Eric was actually the police chief. I muted him.
Okay, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Better.
Sorry, that was really distracting. So, yes, on the rentees that rent, a lot of it is Sol Ross students. They, they don't know the proper procedures to close out an account, so most of the time they'll just skip town. And we in the office do not know or, you know, we don't know when they do this, so their bills just continue to rack up. Right now, it is the responsibly, the responsible. Party is the, the account holder. However, that's been proven to not work out so much. So we want to make it to where at least the property owner comes in and informs us that these people are no longer living here. We want to close this account so that these bills don't continue to rack up.
Perfect.
And that's it. You're welcome.
Good job. Stephanie?
Yes.
All right, good. Next slide, chief, we're gonna have to pull you off mute. You gotta make sure you only got one.
Here we go. Everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting the, the fire report from January through August today. There was a total of nineteen fire calls total. Six are in the city, thirteen were in the county. I reached out to Mr. Scudder, to Chief Scudder. And couldn't not get ahold of him, so I'm trying to do the best I can with the information that was provided to me. I did talk to one of the volunteer firefighters and they do, they have had meetings every Wednesday, the when the meetings start at. Six PM. And. We, I can't see my list here because there's something on my screen. Anyway. We've reached out to the fire department to get an asset list of identifying any, any properties that they are any items they need to have replaced or repaired. Still waiting on that. The last fire department, the quarterly meeting showed them to have twenty volunteer firefighters. And I'm sure if anyone in the community would be interested in being a firefighter, volunteer firefighter, to be sure and reach out to. Chief Scudder with the fire department. And I'm sure he would welcome that. To touch on Lieutenant Fiero, he is currently in the process of getting his fire inspector certification. And it's projected that sometime in November, mid-November is when he should be completed with that. I know a lot of the, the schooling that he has needed has pushed, been pushed back due to COVID. So he is continuing to work on that. He will need to travel to a town over by Dallas to do like a three days hands-on training. Once he gets to that point, but he is working on it and that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions, sir?
Yes, sir.
No, I had said.
So that's it for the city managers' staff reports this evening, Mayor.
Hey, very good. Okay, did David Hale ever come on?
Yes, we, I sent out that note earlier today. We're, we're pushing that till the October sixth meeting.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to public hearings. We have none. And we'll move to the consent agenda, minutes, financial reports. Department-written reports, board appointments, etc. Notice to the public, the following items are routine administrative nature. Been furnished with background and support material on each item and or has been discussed at a previous meeting. Items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by council member. In which event, item or items will immediately be withdrawn from individual consideration in its normal sequence. After the items not requiring discussion have been acted upon, the remaining items will be adopted by one vote, city manager.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have two items this evening. The first one is under my name. It's the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting on September first, two thousand and twenty. And the second item on the consent agenda is under Counselor Stevens' name. It's the approval of Babina, Bibiana, sorry, Bibby Gutierrez for the Parks Board at large for Ward Five.
Okay, now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move reapprove the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, who's second?
Second.
Seconded, okay, any discussion? Be none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, see those and all those against, like sign. Motion carries, thank you all very much. We'll move on to item eight, informational discussion items, sharing in discussion actions. Strategies focus on updating the city by the ordinance that takes account improvements. In technology and consideration of dark sky initiatives, Councilman Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, and Geo, if you could bring Laura Gold off, let me give a short introduction. As you were, technology continues to advance over time. And as a result of that, it provides an opportunity for the city to consider any updates to our existing lighting ordinance to improve. The dark skies that we so much value in the Big Bend area and in West Texas. Proceeded an email from Laura on the twenty first of August. And entered a discussion with her. We've had a number of discussions back and forth. Thought it worthwhile to bring her to council, to walk through a few slides to, in essence, give, bring council up to speed. On the items we have talked about, she's going to end with a recommendation of three items. Of, of one of which is that the city sponsor a community workshop. For sharing with proposed changes, get feedback and potential impacts and make recommendations and. Based upon that, number two, that there be any revision to the proposed ordinance for comments and recommendations. And then that we follow the city process for any proposed changes for lighting. This thing has the potential for having a wide range of impact. I personally think it's the right thing to go do. There are some challenges to go work, so. With that, let me turn it over to Laura and let you walk through the slides, Laura.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Laura.
It's a pleasure to be here with you. Geo, can you go to the next slide? This is a view of Alpine and can you see my mouse moving around on this? No? Okay, so there's to the left, the picture on the left. And the picture on the right, the one on the right is just labeled, but it's dim. I mean, you can see like the sky is milky right above Alpine. That's the light glow from Alpine. Okay, I just wanted you to see that because it's, it's very, it's very visible, very visible. So anyway, next slide. Nineteen ninety-seven compared to two thousand and fourteen, you can see the encroachment from. The surrounding area, you can see the growth of the glow of Alpine. And it's, it's. It's, there's things that we can do about that, but so we need to work together. We need to figure this out. Alpine is a great location. A lot of people have come here. They, you know, they heard about we have dark skies and the town has a. Dark sky ordinance and lighting, a lighting plan, and so let's really make that happen because it's a really neat place to live.
Yeah, Laura.
Yes, sir.
Question, the lighting at Coconut Field. I mean, those things you can see for a mile.
Yes, sir. Yeah, those should be on a timer and not on at all when they're not being used. I think the ordinance currently says that it's one hour after the end of an event.
Done about that or.
So, so maybe that's something we need to go work and we need to make sure everyone's compliant with the curtain ordinance because as you would point out. We don't always do a good job of that, whether it's at Coconut or whether it's at the football field for Sol Ross. So I think there's some work to do. I think this is a great opportunity to bring up awareness and we're going to get into that dialogue.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rick.
Yes, yes, that's the purpose of the workshop. Next slide, please. Okay, pretty much this is what Rick was, was mentioning, you know, we, we. The City of Alpine reapproved. Applying for a dark sky status in two thousand and nine. Now, I don't know how many of you folks on the council were on the council back in two thousand and nine, so maybe there's some historical information that would be. Would come out of a workshop and so it goes back quite a ways. So the tech, and since two thousand and nine, of course, technology has continued to evolve and making. LED lights very affordable, making them portable, making, you can use them anywhere. They're very adaptable. But the existing ordinance, ordinance now. It, it needs work. I'll just leave it at that. It needs a lot of work and. So that's the purpose of holding a workshop, to get all the interested parties together. And to discuss how this is going to affect or how it can affect. And how to make it a really good ordinance that works. The proposed ordinance, if you sit it side by side with the existing ordinance. You, if you have that chat, you will see the night and day difference between the two of them. I mean, to me, to me, anyway. So I hope we do have a workshop. Can I see the next slide, please? Yeah, the key objectives. You can see this reduce and eliminate glare and improve nighttime visibility. And encourage efficient controlled lighting that conserves energy. Make the community a better place to live and work, absolutely more inviting. Protect your neighbors and properties from light trespass. Preserve our heritage of a clear, dark and starry night sky, be mindful of the needs of McDonald's Observatory and position the city to apply. For designation of an international dark sky community. Next slide, please. So we're going to hold a community workshop. That's the plan and with the intent of reviewing the existing and the proposed changes and understand why the ordinance needs to be updated. We, we want, we want feedback on the potential impacts and we want to make recommendations. We want feedback so that we can explain. And understand the feed, the impacts and address them. We want participation. I want to distribute a draft and revised. Of the revised proposed ordinances for comments after that and recommendations and we're going to follow the city process for review and approval. Of ordinance changes. Which includes presentation at city council, public hearings regarding the changes and a vote by council. So I don't know how we're going to schedule that. That's, I guess we'll have another discussion, Mr.
I can answer that, Laura. I'll get with you and get a few proposed dates.
Awesome.
For you and the team.
Okay, and we'll work on a guest list.
Yep, and then we'll work on the guest list. I think, I think we should use the Civic Center, but we've got eight thousand square feet in there and we can spread out and. I know, talking to Bill Ren and seeing, you know, some of the, like when he presented to the independent school district, he brought in some examples. Of different types of fixtures and things, so I think, you know, let's, let's get a good guest list, get a good agenda together. Normally, if we hold these to about two hours. That, that holds people's attention span. Beyond that, it gets a little long.
Okay, sounds good.
We've got to schedule another one after that, that, you know, that's okay too, but just get with me and we'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah, yeah, I found that when people start getting information, they, a lot of questions and then it takes a little bit of back and forth after that.
Yeah, and I think if we put the, the notes from the meeting up on the website as well to allow people who weren't able to attend, we'll, we'll videotape the whole thing as well and. And get, you know, kind of have that open period of time, thirty days or whatever, where people can, you know, engage with either BBCA or you or me and ask questions or their council members.
Perfect, sounds good. Awesome, very, very good. Next.
I have a question for Laura.
Sure.
Do you have any idea? How the Alpine, the present lighting in Alpine may be impacting or affecting? The nighttime viewing and research that's conducted at McDonald's Observatory?
There's a lot of glow. That's why that, that's why I showed that first picture because you can see the light dome over Alpine. And it, it, it does distribute a lot, it scatters a lot of light up into the sky. That's a really good question and I think when we have the workshop, Bill will be able to give you a very good quantitative type of answer.
One thing to possibly bring up at the workshop is. If McDonald's Observatory can help out via grants from whatever sources they get their grants from. To help the city of Alpine make the required changes if needed in the future.
Yes, money, money is on my agenda. It's to find, find money. It's on my agenda too. Yes, indeed. Okay, so I wanted to show you guys to see this. I don't bank here at this bank. But this is a great example of well-done outdoor lighting on a commercial facility. They've got a really, you know, they've got a full cutoff parking lot light in the back left corner. And a, in, in none of the, none of the bulbs that they're using. On the front of the building or in the parking lots or the curbs, none of the bulbs are exposed. They're all hidden so that you don't have any glare. You have nice, very nice lighting. So this is just a good example of a well-done outdoor lighting plan on a commercial property in town. So take a, take a look at it, admire it when you go by at nighttime. Okay, next slide, please. Texas, see that little pocket on the left where Brewster County is where we are? It's gonna shrink. This is in two thousand and fourteen. This is six years ago. So, yeah, we have reason to work on our lighting plan and really. Support the dark sky initiatives and the industries and all the businesses that. Want to make astro-tourism and ecotourism part of our repertoire. What is Alpine known for? What is, you know? We're not just a pit stop on the highway. We're special. Okay, I don't have anything else, folks. Thank you very much.
Laura, thank you and thanks for, and clearly. And thanks for, and clearly you and Eric got some things to work and I'll continue to be engaged and we look forward to dialogue.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mayor, back to you. You're going to unmute, Mayor. We got to unmute you.
There we go. Laura, you still there?
Yep.
Okay. How much of an impact is the petroleum industry north of Jeff Davis and Brewster County still having on the, the lighting as far as the observatory is concerned?
Um, it's significant. It's quite significant. Could I ask Bill Renn to answer that question? I see him in the crowd. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Geo, can you unmute Bill?
Yes, I'm working on it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, hello, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Renn. How you doing?
Doing good. Thank you. Yeah, we've been keeping track of the, the light coming from the Permian Basin, oil and gas related activities now since, but we've been measuring, we've been quantifying it since 2015. And we've seen a significant increase down low on the horizon. Fortunately, we're far enough away from, you know, the main, the closest oil fields are in Reeves County. And so what we see is a glow down low to the horizon that has been increasing, decreasing, increasing, decreasing with the ebb and flow in the oil and gas industry. And by the way, it's not just oil and gas specific. It's also all of the commerce that comes along with it, the new housing and chain stores and restaurants and what have you. That all contributes to what we see. But the glow actually is not interfering significantly with our ability to conduct research. It is concentrated down low to the horizon in the direction of the Permian Basin and does not extend above 30 degrees above our horizon in that direction. We're primarily interested in studying objects in the sky that are much higher overhead. We're not using these big telescope to look down into the trees along the horizon. So as of yet, it's not significantly impacting our ability to do research.
Great. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Okay, very good. And let's go ahead and move on to the item two, city manager.
Yeah, Honorable Attorney, City Council, item two is the information discussion on issues the City of Alpine is encountering with Brewster County. The discussion, the discussion will also include the magistration process related to the county accepting arrested individuals by Alpine Police Department. Had shared with council a couple of weeks ago, a meeting request that our district attorney, Sandy Wilson, had sent out to the sheriff, the judge, police chief and myself. Council asked that we get feedback from that. So invited Sandy Wilson to attend the meeting and give us feedback on that this evening. She did ask that, you know, we do, you know, let her go through, limit the discussion or the questions until the end. And there, because it is an open investigation on certain items, there will be limited things that she can answer. Geo, if you can, standing off of mute.
She's ready.
Okay.
I'm ready. Are you, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandy Wilson. I'm the 83rd District Attorney out here in this area. And I'm here to address these ongoing issues between the Alpine Police Department and the Brewster County Sheriff's Department regarding refusal of the Sheriff's Department to allow the police officers to put arrested individuals in jail prior to magistration. I'm going to do, I'm just going to do a quick background, just kind of give you an idea of where we're at. As far back as I can remember, and I'm a local from Marathon, the Brewster County Sheriff's Office, Alpine Police Department and Saul Ross have always worked well together. The officers have always worked well out in the city, doing, especially in the, the limits of the city, doing, helping each other, assisting with arrests and, and certain calls and stuff like that. And since the agencies are so small, it's very inherent that they work together in this area because, because they've got to ensure a safe environment for everywhere, everyone. And the standard of practice for all law enforcement agencies, whether you're DPS, city, sheriff, whatever, is to admit an arrested individual into jail prior to magistration. That's always happened. The underlying rationale behind this is to get the officer back out on patrol and it's perfectly legal for the jail to accept these individuals prior to magistration. Now, I want to, I want to talk briefly about the magistrates. One of the many jobs of the magistrates that we have, we have some that are elected officials such as Justice of the Peace Officers. We have some that are appointed by the city, such as a city judge. There, along, among their many duties they have is the duty to magistrate an individual after arrest. And they do this by informing them of the charge, admonishing them to their rights, like the right to remain silent, and especially to the right to have counsel during any criminal proceeding. They also will assist, some magistrates can assist in obtaining counsel for an individual if he's indigent. They also are set responsible for setting bail for these individuals as well as any type of conditions that might go along with the type of crime there and the level of the crime that they're being charged with. And it's important to note, the magistrates have a 24 to 48 hour window in which they're obligated to magistrate an arrested individual. So this present issue is not a magistration issue as long as they stay within that, that timeframe. And during my investigation, I got a lot of feedback that that was the issue, was the magistrate. It's not. The issue kind of started, as y'all recall, in November 2019, Robert Mark was appointed as the new chief of the City Police Department. When he was appointed, he was currently working for Brewster County Sheriff's Department as a deputy and the court bailiff for the district court. And shortly after his hiring, Alpine officers began having increasing difficulty communicating with the Brewster County Sheriff's deputies when they requested assistance. And then come, fast forward to March 2020, Brewster County Sheriff's Department abruptly began refusing admission of arrestees into the county jail unless they were first magistrated. And it's important to note that no other law enforcement agency out here has been required to magistrate their arrested individuals prior to admission into the Brewster County Jail. Only Alpine Police Department was affected. Then after this policy took effect, the deputies began to refuse to assist Alpine police officers at all. And they have a certain encryption on their radios that they can, that they can initiate that prevents communication between Alpine police officers and the Sheriff's Department. Now, after years of everybody doing well with this, this abrupt change is kind of concerning. And then about this time, the local magistrates begin to refuse to magistrate at night because they're, you know, they sleep at night. So, and they, their, their time that they didn't want to magistrate was between 10:00 PM and 7:00 to 8:00 AM the next morning. And this forced the Alpine Police Department officers then to be pulled off the streets and away from calls when they arrest an individual so that they can sit with the individual until a magistrate is available. And neither Alpine PD or the City of Alpine has ever had any type of holding cells because they're always able to put their, these individuals in jail immediately after their arrest. And then in addition, another issue is once the individual is magistrated, the officer and the individual are forced to wait outside the jail because as of March, Alpine police officers are no longer able to go into the jail at all, which means that Sallyport, that little area that raises up where they can go in with their car and close it to ensure that the, a person arrested doesn't escape, they're no longer have access to that. They have to wait outside with this individual after magistration until a jailer comes in and takes the individual. Then they further have to wait after that until they return with their handcuffs. Only then can the officer return to duty. And this is leaving the streets in the City of Alpine with almost no officers to patrol or take calls. The only other option for the police department at this time is to release the individuals back into the community and arrest them later once your magistrate sign the warrant. This is not only a big safety issue for citizens in Alpine, but it's certainly going to be a big liability issue for the City of Alpine should someone be injured or hurt if they have to release these individuals back out into the community. And to add further injury, on August 4th of this year, Saul Ross University Police Dispatch was immediately relocated from the Alpine Police Department to the Brewster County Sheriff's Dispatch. And this happened literally overnight. No notice, no anything to the city, no notice to anybody. And, and prior to this, they had been in the Alpine Police Department for years, as far as I know, for a long time. And they, what they do is they did is they shared the same phone system. So if a person called for either the Alpine PD or Saul Ross, which they're all in the city limits, their call was handled immediately. However, now that they've moved over to the Sheriff's Department, it's a different phone system. So, and without giving notice to anybody, it's kind of made it difficult. You're going to have a situation where someone's going to call, needing to talk to a Saul Ross officer, where they always call at the police department and have to be told to hang up their phone and call the Sheriff's Department because there's no connection between the lines. In addition, now, after, after the Saul Ross officers were removed, were moved over there, their radios have now become encrypted where they're not able to communicate with the Alpine Police Department. And this move has effectively crippled Alpine Police Department from performing their duties to police and ensure the safety of the residents of Alpine. Also of concern is welfare of the police officers, both Alpine police officers, Brewster County deputies and Saul Ross patrol officers who no longer have communication to be able to back each other in a severe emergency situation. And I, I looked, I looked over this, I asked questions, I investigated through this case for a couple of weeks. Both the City of Alpine and the Chief of Police have reached out to the Brewster County Sheriff's Office and the Sheriff several times to resolve this issue. And they have received no response at all from the Brewster County or the Sheriff. And, and a following example is of some things that are probably going to be happening here because we had an incident August 8th, right after they were removed. An Alpine officer arrested an individual during the night and he took him to the police station because there was nowhere else to keep him. And he put him in his office. And when he stepped into the adjacent office to grab a form, this individual takes off running, goes through the, the police station door, out into the street while he's fully handcuffed. Now, fortunately, the officer was able to go catch this guy and nobody got injured, neither the, the person or the officer, any citizen. But the officer had no one to call for assistance either. And this gave this individual a felony charge, which they shouldn't have had to have if the, if the, if the officer had been allowed to go ahead and admit them prior to red, magistration at night. Once I was a made aware of the escape, it became clear to my office that the city attorney was not adequately addressing this issue. And I am, a lot of people don't know this, but I'm the chief law enforcement officer out here. So I stepped in at that point and sent a letter to the city, to the county judge and the sheriff, requesting an immediate hearing to stop, to address this issue. And I also requested the sheriff to immediately stop this policy until we could meet and work out a safer resolution. The sheriff neither acknowledged my request, nor did he come to the meeting, nor did he send any representative to this meeting, which I think is very important meeting. This, this, this continued refusal by the sheriff, the BCSO and the sheriff to meet with the city for a rapid resolution, not only a safety issue for citizens of Alpine and the county, but a safety issue for our local officers. They live here, they work here, many of them were raised here, and it's just not fair to our community. And my office for one is not going to tolerate bullying, illegal and deceptive acts by one law enforcement agency against another, to the point of not allowing that agency to perform its law enforcement duties. No law enforcement agency gets to abuse its office by obstructing and retaliating against another agency ever. And because I've received no response, I have reached out to the Attorney General's Office, I've spoke to an attorney over there, I have sent them a detailed letter detailing all of the issues here between the city and the Sheriff's Department, sent it along with supporting documents and text messages made by the sheriff. I have asked for immediate assistance before anyone gets hurt or killed because it's not a matter of if, it is a matter of when. And this is a serious issue that I believe needs to be addressed immediately. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Sandy, this is the mayor. Did you talk to Rod Ponton, the city attorney on this issue?
I did not talk to Rod Ponton on this issue because he had already been communicating with the sheriff and sending, addressing this issue back as it not being an issue with the sheriff, but more with the city. That, he addressed this issue as being a magistrative issue. It is not a magistrative issue. It is an issue of one agency refusing another agency to perform their duties. That's what this is.
So it's only one department that's having that issue?
Yes. DPS can admit, HSI, any of these other law enforcement agencies are able to continue the way it's always been, where you put them in prior to magistration, especially at night because these officers, we're limited to how many officers we have out on the street, whether it's Brewster County Sheriff, whether it's Alpine PD or whether it's Saul Ross. And these officers need to be getting back out on the street. And they're not being allowed to do that. And it was an abrupt change from, since March of this year.
And you say you've, you tried to reach out to the Sheriff's Department on this and so has Chief Martin?
That is correct. We have reached out.
Documented somewhere that y'all have reached out to him?
Yes, it is documented. And Judge Kano is the one that responded on behalf of Sheriff Dotson and told me in one email that it would be, he would be on standby. He got noticed. So I emailed him at a second email address and personally requested that he come and address this issue. And he has refused to this date.
Any questions for Sandy?
I'm sorry, who was the one that had suggested for you to bring this up? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out as to why Rod wasn't involved in this from the very beginning. And who went to Sandy to start this?
Oh, I can answer that question. There was an email, a memo sent out by Rod in, in June where he addressed the issue as being a magistrative issue in that if the sheriff was indeed doing this against the city, then that was wrong. Other than that, there, he has reached out, he has actually met with the sheriff and with the county attorney at his office. And he is pretty much laying the blame on the fact that the magistrates are the ones at fault here. And the magistrates are not at fault. When I learned about that escape on August 8th and the fact that that individual now has a felony charge, that's when I got involved because it's obvious to me that Mr. Ponton is, is not able to handle this situation.
Any more questions?
Rod does. He's muted though.
Hello?
Yeah, can y'all hear me now?
We can hear you. Yes.
Yeah, I've never heard from Ms. Wilson regarding this issue. I have not blamed the magistrates on the issue. The issue obviously is an issue between the Sheriff's Office and the police department. The magistrates have said that they're willing to magistrate persons arrested, but they don't want to do it in the middle of the night. And so that's the, the way the issue has been laid out. When I met with the sheriff, the sheriff explained to me that his reluctance to accept police department cases for, to go into the jail before the magistration was because he was afraid of his civil liability if a person was arrested without probable cause. And it's that if a magistrate determined that there was a lawful arrest, he was happy to take that person into jail because then he would be protected from civil liability. And I've sent a memo to the council regarding that. So it's not that I'm unable to deal with this. As city attorney, it's not my job to, to magistrate people. And it's not my job to, to follow the magistration process. That's a process that goes between the law enforcement agencies. That's a process that goes between the law enforcement agencies and the, uh, magistrates. The magistrates in this regard are Bob Steele, the Justice of the Peace, and Sandy Stewart, the, uh, Alpine City magistrate. Uh, Ms. Wilson, have you talked to Mr. Steele or Ms. Stewart about them, uh, being available for magistration?
I have not, Mr. Ponton, because that's not a magistration issue. It is an issue of the fact that the sheriff is refusing to allow admission until they're magistrated. And like I stated before, magistrates have a 24 to 48 hour window before they can respond. And you have responded to this before. You brought up, you actually shared three Texas Attorney General's opinions that simply said, they don't have, the, the Sheriff's Department, it's a shall admit to jail post magistration. The first time this concern about his civil, civil liability issue has arisen was in your September 3rd letter, I believe. And if you research the law, I've got a case, Busby, it says that as long as the, it says the jail, the, the sheriff of a jail has to entrust his sheriff to the, his, his duties to the jailers. And as long as he's not a part of the act, of the criminal act of arresting someone unlawfully, or, uh, or messing with their rights after they get into jail, he is not going to be held liable, and neither is the county. So that's not the issue here. The issue is the fact that he's absolutely abusing his office to make sure that these, that the Alpine Police Department is crippled. That's something, I wouldn't be here today if you had done what I think you should have done.
How could, look, you, what authority do you have to order the sheriff to, to admit people into his jail before they're magistrated?
I do not. That's why I sought to meet with the sheriff, who refused to meet with me, Mr. Ponton. I said, not, it was not illegal to do it.
Let me ask you this question. What authority do I have as city attorney to order the sheriff to admit people into his jail pre-magistration?
You don't have an authority to order him, but you certainly have an authority to investigate the case and protect the rights of the city of Alpine, which has not happened, or else I would not be here tonight, Mr. Ponton.
Well, I disagree with you, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, so we can go back and forth here. Could you can we share a little bit about the history of the jail? And what, uh, in your meeting, uh, with Judge Kano, his acknowledgement about, uh, where the responsibility for the jail lies and how we came to that point?
Uh, I did have a meeting with Mr. Kano. He was pretty irritated acting during the meeting. He insisted on recording it, so I just asked him a couple of questions before he left, mainly that, uh, when this jail was built, I believe it's when Judge, uh, when the current county judge at that time was Val Beard, I believe she met with this current city manager, which I apologize, I don't know the name, and they agreed-
Bill Saul was the mayor. Bill Saul was the mayor at the time.
And they agreed that if the, the county could build that jail on city land at the time, which I think has been sold to the county by now, that, um, people could be, the Alpine Police Department could admit their people into jail without, uh, any problems. And, and that's, that's how it's always been. It's always been that way up until March of, uh, 2020 of this year. So I cannot understand what the sudden change was, and I do not understand why, uh, he's only picking on one agency. That's, that's a, that's a big question, because Alpine City and the residents of Alpine, they're the ones at risk, and this is a big issue.
Counselor Stevens, I get confirmed that with Judge Beard, uh, that that agreement had been made between her and Mayor Saul, uh, and then Judge Kano confirmed that, uh, in the meeting that, that Sandy Wilson held.
So it's like many items between the city and the county, whether it's fire department, et cetera, we shared to be able to reduce cost. In this case, what I'm hearing stating is that the sheriff has made a unilateral decision that goes against the agreement that was put in place that originally established the basis for building the jail.
That is correct.
Thank you. Do we have a, a copy of the written agreement? Or was this just a verbal?
I believe it was just verbal.
Just a verbal. Judge, Judge Beard confirmed that they did not memorialize it in writing, uh, but, uh, Judge Kano did confirm that he was aware of, of that verbal agreement, uh, between the city and the county.
So I presume there'll be action, Eric, to get that documented, so that issue goes away?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eric, if I can offer maybe another viewpoint, it, it seems to me like, um, there are some definitely serious issues between the county and the city. Uh, but as mentioned by the judge, the important thing is protection of our residents, especially if, uh, somebody's arrested who is questionable and can, you let go or escapes can cause damage out there. And does the city have any, um, let's say adequate or standardized, uh, location where can be used as a holding deck until the individual can be, uh, magistrated? Or in case of a serious issue, will the individual can either be transported to another, uh, facility? And if so, is it cost effective?
So we do not have any holding cells, um, from a city perspective. And, uh, if, if we did transport them, yes, there would be, uh, costs associated with that.
Is there any chance of, uh-
And, and actually, I think Sandy Wilson can identify whether we could even take them across county line, or get them magistrated.
I, I think in a situation like that, and I, I think even Mr. Ponton would agree with me, they'd have to get some permission, you know, from the other counties. I do know that prior to magistration, the liability of any incident happening with that arrested person lies with the arresting agent. But post-registrar, uh, magistration, if the sheriff still refuses to admit them, then the liability is going to lie on the county.
It, it seems like we were having a little, uh, political differences here between the sheriff and, and, uh, APD. And perhaps we need to get a mediator to sit down with them to come to an agreement or an understanding. Because, uh, since the city does not have a holding salary, and yeah, I'm seeing both sides of, of the coin here. You know, the sheriff, it's a liability on me if something's, uh, to that individual, or if he's forgotten about it, he doesn't get magistrated within the allotted time. So, I mean, I for one will sit down if need be between the two parties as a private citizen to come to a resolve on this issue.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, we have to work together. That's very important.
Well, I, I just got to tell you, from my perspective, when you have a sheriff who changes the frequencies on the radio to make them encrypted and not allow communication between APD, Saw Ross, and, uh, and the sheriff, in my mind, this is not a practice that we should accept. It's not about resolution, it's about a direct affront from the Sheriff's Office to Alpine Police Department. And, and in my view, one can take it no other way. Uh, I, I recall, we on council saw the notice from the sheriff. It was not pre-coordinated, it was not discussed, it was just issued. Uh, when we think about what's gone on communication, it was not pre-coordinated, it was not the opportunity. Uh, when you have a, a law enforcement agency who refuses to help others in need, that is not working together, it's an attitudinal issue. So, uh, uh, I don't see any way in which a negotiation is going to solve this problem. I would also say, I suspect we're going to get into some of this discussion, uh, as part of the presentation. I know we're going to have an executive session, uh, because as, uh, the district attorney said, there are some, uh, there's an investigation underway, which we cannot talk about in open form.
That was my suggestion to try to get some kind of result. We just can't go on, uh, in, you know, Rick, I understand what you're saying, but still we need to get this issue resolved one way or another.
Uh, so I can tell you, Andy, I've been approached about having a discussion as well, and so far that meeting hasn't occurred, despite my best efforts to reach out to be able to dialogue. So, uh, there's, there's been lots of attempts, and we are now, uh, six months into this, and still no resolution. Uh, and from a liability standpoint, my concern is the city's going to have to expend funds to build a jail, because it appears that at least one of the parties is not on an agreement, even though the county judge, the current county judge acknowledges that agreement is in place. And as I said, I think there's investigatory things underway that I'm not privy to, but our district attorney has stated there are some issues, we're going to have to rely on the DA to go work that. All right, Tom, move on to the next item.
I think the mayor dropped back off.
Uh-oh. Okay.
I don't see him.
Uh, he's coming back on? Nope, there he is. Okay, Andy, we got to get, got to get your internet worked on, Andy. We can't hear you. Unmute him, please.
I've got two computers side by side, and the one on the Zoom is the one that's cutting out on me.
Uh-oh.
Yep, so I don't know what it is. They both have good, strong signals and everything.
I talked to your ISP.
Yeah.
Sorry for them, I think. Should have some pull.
I had pulled. You know, the hours just take longer.
Yep.
Well, I have just one question. I just, I just want clarification on one thing. Who is over the sheriff?
The voters are over the sheriff. And then if he's committing an illegal act, uh, that's, that's, uh, that'll become a criminal investigation. And I believe he's committed some illegal acts here, and, you know, he, he only, he, his only, his only bosses are his constituents, unless he's committing an illegal act.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
Item number nine.
A brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited up to 10 per meeting. After being called upon by the mayor or mayor pro tem, citizens are required to state their name and warden with they reside. Priority will be given to the citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own businesses or operating the city limits of Alpine will be allotted to speak if there's time available. And item number one, city-
Honorable Mayor and City Council, item number one is to discuss considering approving and adopting the 2020, 2021 tax year proposed tax rate for the city of Alpine, Texas by ordinance 2020 dash zero eight dash zero one. Tax rate of point five five three seven five three per $100 valuation has been recommended for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Maintenance and operations is point five one two eight three three, and interest in sinking is point zero four zero nine two. Um, the motion will need to, to be read, uh, as stated in our agenda, and I would recommend a roll call, call vote on this this evening.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I propose that city council approve and adopt the 2020, 2021 tax year proposed tax rate for the city of Alpine, Texas by ordinance 2020 dash zero eight dash zero one. The tax rate of 0.553753 per $100 valuation, uh, which has been recommended for fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Maintenance on operations is, uh, 0.512833, with interest and sinking is 0.04092. And, uh, we did a name roll call at the last meeting as well to comply with the, uh, ordinance or Texas rules on this.
Do I hear a second on this?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made, and second, do the roll call with you, Councilman Stevens.
Aye.
Aye, you voted in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Betty?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And Councilman, uh, Ramon?
Uh, yes, I, I approve.
Okay, and I, I'm sorry, and I skipped Councilperson Escobedo.
I approve.
Okay, and now we have, uh, Councilman Maria Kirk.
I approve.
What's that?
I approve.
Okay, very good, thank you. And opposing? Okay, motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Item number two, um, in your packet is to discuss considering take appropriate action on resolution 2020 dash zero nine dash 15, to accept the recommended solicitation of brokers on the submitted broker list as required by our investment policy. It did include backup in your packet to review ahead of time as well.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose that we approve resolution 2020 dash zero nine dash 15, to accept the recommended solicitation of brokers on the submitted broker list as required by our investment policy.
Okay, entertain a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made, and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. City manager?
Sir, item number three is to discuss considering take appropriate action on resolution 2020 dash zero nine dash 16, to approve strategies and guidelines to invest according to our investment policy. I did include, uh, cover sheet, uh, the resolution, and additional information in your packet.
Okay.
Mayor?
I, I propose we approve resolution 2020 dash nine dash 16, approve the strategies and guidelines to invest according to our investment policy for the city of Alpine.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motions made, and, and it, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, city manager?
All right, another one. Uh, item number four is to discuss considering take appropriate action on the recommendations on the Woodward lease, uh, at the airport. Did include information in your packet. Uh, the airport advisory board has, uh, also approved the recommendation, their resolution, uh, approving that is in your packet as well.
There a motion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we approve, uh, uh, the Woodward lease at the airport.
Is there a second? Hey, they'll give me some time here. Okay, motion made, and second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. City manager?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, uh, next item on, on the list is item number five, to discuss considering take appropriate action, approving resolution 2020 dash zero nine dash zero two, to adopt the official newspaper for fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. Uh, we did have this discussion, uh, at the last council meeting, and went back and gathered more information. Uh, that additional information was included in this week's packet as well. Uh, I know several folks have, have had reach outs from community members too.
Okay. Entertain the motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to get the dialogue going, because I know it's going to be an interesting dialogue.
Yes, it is.
I, uh, I would propose that the, uh, city, uh, council approve resolution 2020 dash zero nine dash zero two, to adopt the Big Ben Sentinel as the official paper for fiscal year 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
So I said, since I made the motion, and I know there's going to be lots of, of dialogue here, uh, I, I've gotten considerable feedback, and I know we've all seen, uh, emails that have come to all of us, uh, in support of, uh, the, uh, the Alpine Avalanche, uh, and I'm a, I'm a, uh, a subscriber to both the Avalanche and the Big Ben Sentinel, and- And no matter what decision council makes, that's not gonna change my position regarding that. When I ask people about their recommendations, what the rationale has been, the consistent answer coming back has been that the Big Ben Sentinel does a better job reporting on city and specifically city council matters. Uh, and they feel better informed about that. And when they look to what's going on, they look to the Big Ben Sentinel for their primary information. That's not to say that the Avalanche doesn't have information out there, uh, because they have. But, uh, the Big Ben Sentinel has really stepped up. And so that's the predominant feedback I've gotten at least across Ward Five, uh, because I have a number of people that have spoken to me. So those are my comments and that's the rationale.
I have gotten the same feedback from everybody in my, you know, that's responded in my ward.
Okay, anybody else? And I've gotten the opposite feedback, uh, from a cross section of town. Also, the Alpine Avalanche has been here since 1890. It's a homegrown newspaper. The owners live in Alpine, they shop in Alpine. They support Alpine, uh, all the school, all the school events, they're there as the booster. They do provide the information that, that's needed, uh, from city council and, uh, what folks need to know. And I believe that they do it truthfully and, and, uh, they're very fair about in their reporting. Now, we always talk about shopping Alpine. This is moving in the opposite direction. This is moving to another town. So I strongly recommend that since we're always saying we need to shop Alpine, we need to stay with the Avalanche. Like I say, homegrown newspaper and they're deeply entrenched in Alpine, uh, as a community, it's a great community, uh, friend. So my recommendation is to go with the app. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, as city councilor of Ward Two, I also choose to designate the Alpine Avalanche as the official newspaper for the city.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I agree with Ramon and with you, Mayor. Working back, um, when I used to work for the Chamber of Commerce for 10 years. Shopping at home was the biggest thing, economic development here, keeping our money here. So the Alpine Avalanche is my choice.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Betty.
Uh, I agree with everybody. I, I think the Avalanche should be their main paper from here.
Any more discussion? Let's put it to, yes, sir.
The one, the one point that I would like to make and, you know, it's, uh, either paper is gonna service. I think there are two points that I think are important from my perspective. One, I think the Avalanche needs to step up its game. Because I, as I said, I think the reporting that we're seeing out of the Big Ben Sentinel, particularly about this meetings, these meetings here is far better than what goes on the Avalanche. The second point I would make is, I understand JT's frustration, uh, in the note that he, that he sent to us. But I would like to make, uh, two particular comments about it. It says he was personally embarrassed. It says he was blindsided. I know there's been discussions going back and forth with JT since June and July on this. And we, we opened this dialogue in August. It's a little bit bothersome that there would be the combative nature as opposed to answering the question, hey, I hear you. We got a strong message. How do we improve? Because I think we are not served well when we have a paper that looks and says, I'm entitled, as opposed to I've gotta earn it. And last I checked, I don't think anyone's guaranteed a job anywhere. We do, in fact, have to go earn it. I think the second item, and I'm looking at our package, which you all have the opportunity to look at, is the dialogue back and forth with, uh, Mike Hodges at, uh, at the, uh, Texas Press. And, and would say, hey, even Mike made a comment, sent a letter out that it didn't go to us. It, it appeared to go to JT and then after a push back and forth with Eric, we finally got it. I just think if we're gonna play the game and play above board, we have an expectation that our city newspaper is gonna be above board, uh, and on the table. And, and I would hope that they would step up their game regardless of the outcome. Because fundamentally, I do believe that the Avalanche ought to be the paper. My struggle is I think they've taken it for granted. That's my piece.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor, one Sentinel, raise your hand. I see one, Ms. Curry. Okay, that's two. All right, okay, and it's, how about the Avalanche? Raise your right hand. See, one, two, three. Okay, uh, it seems like the Avalanche by one vote, so we will continue to go the Avalanche. And perhaps then, uh, like you say, councilman, he'll step up, uh, to the game, into the plate. And we'll get more and better coverage.
Yeah, Mayor, somebody is gonna have to make a motion to amend.
Right, the, the motion.
Motion, and then that amendment is gonna have to be approved, uh, and then the motion would have to be approved.
Right, okay. Will anybody make the, um, motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Okay, to amend it to what?
To adopt the Alpine Avalanche as the official newspaper for the fiscal year 2020-2021. Resolution 2020-09-02.
Okay, is there a second on it?
I have a second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Okay, all those in favor, the new motion, raise your right hand. One, two, three. I see three. Oppose? See, one, Ms. Curry, I don't see you on the screen.
Here, raising my hand.
I see your hand now.
Okay.
Okay, the motion carries. It's three to two. Okay?
So the amendment carried, so now you've gotta... You've gotta have another vote, Mayor.
Okay.
Gotta approve the action item with the amendment.
Amendment. Yep, the amendment to the, to the action item.
Correct.
Okay, I will entertain that.
Cynthia, maybe you can read back the motion and the amendment?
You don't mind?
The amendment was made by Counselor Escobedo to adopt resolution 2020-09-02 to adopt the official newspaper, um, as the Avalanche for the fiscal year 2020-2021. And it was seconded by Counselor Olivas.
Cynthia, that's amending?
That's amending.
Okay, the amendment.
So now we need, we need to vote on the first motion to discuss, discuss, consider and take appropriate action, uh, to adopt the official newspaper.
Okay, and that motion had been made and seconded.
Correct.
Motion was made on, on this Big Ben Sentinel and then it was amended to the Alpine Avalanche.
Correct.
Right.
We get all this on record.
Okay, to make sure that everyone understands it.
Correct.
The amendment, the first motion was to adopt the Sentinel as the newspaper, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we need a vote on that motion, up or down, correct?
No, no.
No?
You amended that motion.
Right.
You amended that motion renaming the selected paper to Alpine Avalanche.
Okay. So the motion will be on, um, item six or item five, rather, would be the Avalanche in.
Correct.
To vote on that, right?
Voting on.
Okay. So I will entertain that motion then.
Well, it was already motion and seconded, so you'll just take a, take a vote on it now.
Okay, now it's, the amendment was to make the, uh, Avalanche the newspaper of record. So that's what we're voting on, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so all those, any discussion on this? Any more discussion? Seeing none, okay, all those that favor the motion of Avalanche as a, as a newspaper of record. Raise your right hand. Okay, see, one. Uh, Betty, you voting to? Ramon, where you at? Don't see you.
Got his hand high. He's got his pen there too.
Okay, all those opposed, raise your hand. One, two, okay, the motion carries. And so the Alpine Avalanche would be the newspaper. Thank you all very much.
You know, in a great first article might be, uh, uh, an article on Robert's Rules of Orders and amending motions that are made and getting that out. I would suggest that.
Yep, absolutely. I'm way rusty on those things. Okay, let's move on to item six.
Correct. Mayor City Council, six is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action on the recommendations from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee on the hotel occupancy tax allocations, uh, for this upcoming fiscal year. Really surrounding the events, we had information in your packet. Laura Gold, who presented earlier this evening, is also on that Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee. So she's one who helped create those recommendations. But in your packet, you have the original requests from the events. And then spreadsheet two was what the recommendation was from the committee.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, I propose that the city council approve the recommendations from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee on the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund allocation of $180,000 for fiscal year, uh, for the next fiscal year, leaving a reserve of approximately $1 million.
Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
So, 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 pardon the discussions, I know there was 215,000 that was proposed, uh, and I might have missed it in the reading. We, we went from 215 to 180, what was the 25,000, uh, or 35,000, rather, that was pulled off? Can you just comment, Eric?
Yeah, the biggest item really was Cowboy Poetry Gathering. They had requested close to 50,000, uh, committee recommended 25. That was, uh, primarily due to them, uh, gonna promote a virtual event this year. They're not gonna do a, a live in-person event.
Gotcha.
As the committee looked through it and talked through it, they, they felt like that was, that was a better allocation.
Okay, and, and was there any feedback from Cowboy Poetry on that? Do we know?
Uh, I don't know. I've got, let me unmute Chris real quick. Chris, yeah, gotten any feedback?
I, I have not, but I haven't actually spoken with them. I haven't, uh, I haven't worked back with them. I apologize.
So, uh, thanks, Chris. You know, my sense is, you know, we have, uh, we got a great allocation. We got the roughly $1 million available. So I presume, you know, we as council and the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee will be ready to listen to any reasonable requests. Because we wanna bring business back in Alpine. It's nice that we've got the flexibility to go do that.
Certainly, yes.
Absolutely.
One of the things that, you know, we're gonna wanna do is just kinda set what that, um, real reserve amount needs to look like. You know, is that $400,000 or $500,000? And then, uh, you know, actively work to make sure we're, we're supporting events and doing other advertising as the, the economy starts growing back here.
Yep.
Yeah, i-if I may, uh, counsel, uh, the, the other change, the, the remaining $10,000 change was in, uh, the Fiesta of Our Lady of Peace, uh, Fiesta, uh, their event. It turned out the event actually was in the 2021-22 fiscal year. So their promotion of the arts request actually could not be awarded for the event date they were asking. So, uh, the committee awarded them a small amount for advertising that we would encourage them to promote the event, uh, leading up to it. And then in next year's appropriation, they, that, uh, that request could be considered.
It could have.
In, in respect to that last, uh, comment, um, I'm a little bit, um, skeptical as to the, the small amount, uh, for advertising for the, uh, Lady of Peace Catholic Church for the event. They requested $10,000, uh, but they're only gonna get, apparently the recommended amount was $500 for promotion. And to be honest with you, the, the $500 won't even, it'll just cover minimal promotion and basically at a local level. Uh, and second, I, I was lucky enough to be the, uh, the emcee for that activity, uh, last year. And the activity exhibited cultural interchange, uh, cultural activities, children's games and curious activities as well. And it was basically a family oriented, uh, activity with people not only from Alpine, but outside of Alpine as well. And this year to see this, that I've requested 10,000 and only 500, seems to me a little bit low. And of course, not knowing what the HOTS committee, uh, purpose or the, um, guidelines or the, uh, bylaws are, it's, it's, uh, a little difficult to grasp.
Well, I, I can, I can explain it exactly. The, uh, the $500 actually, so the $10,000 that was requested by the event was specifically for promotion of the art. So they were asking for funds to pay the entertainers at the time of the event. But because the event is, is in October 2022, it doesn't actually fall in this fiscal year. So the committee could not give them that money now because they were asking for an event that doesn't occur in the fiscal year that we're funding. And so they can come back with the exact same application next year and get funded. But because of the date, we can't appropriate funds for the 2021-22 fiscal, I mean, sorry, the 2020-2021 fiscal year, the fiscal year we're looking at right now, we can't appropriate those funds for an event that happens in the following year. So that, that was the issue. So the, that, it just couldn't be spent now. And so the committee, uh, the event actually did not ask for any advertising money. So the committee awarded some promotional funds, uh, to assist leading in with the intention that when the next round of funding comes in for the 2021-22 fiscal year, that the event would come back with the same request. And it could be funded because that's the appropriate year when the money would be spent.
Did anyone on the committee ever consider that maybe what was submitted was in a mistake? And tried to reach the, uh, promoter or the organizers for the event for clarification? Because I spoke to, um, an individual and they said, the only request was submit something we did and never heard any, uh, never got any word, uh, prior, during the selection recommendation phase or the, the final outcome.
Well, uh, I was, I've been, uh, available to anyone to, uh, and so when I've been requested to answer questions, et cetera, I've, I've been available and, uh, Mrs. Campbell, I certainly worked with her in the previous year. And so, uh, she did not reach out to me with any, uh, with any questions or ask me for any input. So I, I didn't, uh, proactively reach out to everyone, but I would have been available to anyone who, uh, who had any questions for me.
Uh, but you didn't take it upon yourself to question, uh, the request and maybe ask her if there might have been a mistake?
Uh, I did not, no.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more question, comments?
Uh, I have a comment. I'm just wondering if on that application that Ramon's talking about, if that can be fixed with the, I'm, I'm assuming that it's just a problem with, or an error with the date.
Chris?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they, if they, if, if, if they were looking to do an event this year and not next fiscal year, then, um, yeah, the committee can come back together and look at it. I think the committee was very supportive of the event. um, yeah, the committee can come back together and look at it. I think the committee was very supportive of the event. The only reason it got moved over is because it was, uh, on the application scheduled for, for the next fiscal year. In fact, it was John Green on the committee that actually called that out.
Would it be possible for, uh, someone to call Mrs. Campbell and try to get some clarification on this?
Yeah, we, uh, we call all the folks after, uh, council renders their decision.
Thank you.
Um, my, my, my put on this is, we've got, you know, we can go and approve it then as I think we're all amenable uh, to strategies going forward. We certainly have financial flexibility with this. I don't think the city's ever seen a billion dollars available in the Hotel occupancy tax fund. So, uh, I think probably two things we want to ask the HOTS committee to do is one, uh, answer the question, Ramon, that, uh, that you raised and Lucy that you raised. And then the second is to go back and look and say, hey, what's the strategy that they think the city ought to adopt? Relative to funds expenditures, once the economy starts coming back and we're ready to open our doors.
We still have two more at-large positions, uh, for that committee that, uh, council can, can recommend individuals in the community on too, so.
Okay.
Team, the team did a great job when they, they came together in that.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, seeing that, those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, Ramon, okay, I see yours. Betty? Okay, Maria?
Did you see my hand?
For somebody, yeah, okay, all righty, the motion carries. A unanimous decision. Okay, city council member, comment, answers. We'll start with you, Rick.
Sure. Hey, thanks, Mayor. Uh, as always, these are great meetings, great opportunity for discussion. Uh, you know, frankly, we always don't agree, uh, which is fine, but these are the right things. I think getting things on the table, being able to have an open, uh, discussion about items we may or may not be aware of is important. So thanks very much for the engagement and, you know, thanks, uh, again for the great reports that got put on the table uh, across the board because the, the quality of those reports, in my view, is phenomenal. So thanks.
Great comment, uh, councilman. Okay, councilperson Escobedo.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for attending.
Okay, uh, fit, councilperson Fitzgerald.
I think it was a good meeting.
Councilman Ramon Olivas.
Mr. Mayor, uh, good meeting. I, um, we have challenges ahead and some issues that we need to certainly look into and will work to resolve them. I'd like to make two comments. One is, I recently attended the, the twenty-ninth annual bi-national history conference in San Elizario, Texas. And much of the focus was on the Camino Real de Tierra Dentro, which extends from Mexico City all the way to, uh, uh, Valle de Yende. And it's, it's part now of the World Heritage Program. Mexico did a tremendous job in getting it now recognized on the World Heritage. But of course, the Camino Real extends from Mexico City all the way to El Pueblo San Juan, just north of, uh, of Espaniola. In attending this meeting, I had an opportunity to, to get together with, uh, friends, colleagues from the tourism, government and education, uh, department, and it was fantastic. I mean, I learned a lot. And, um, but more so the initiative that it seems that Mexico is now taking in promoting bi-national tourism. And also, um, which is something we need, might want to keep in mind as we get more into developments and, um, initiatives in dealing, in our dealings across from Ofinaga to Alpine to Fort Stockton. The second thing I'd like to bring up is I recently heard that on NBC News and then uh, you, MSU, University of Albuquerque, the New York State Fish Department have questions about why the migratory birds are dying. And apparently, we're not talking about hundreds of birds that are just, are being found in the fields dead. We're talking, they're saying hundreds of thousands. And how might that affect us? Something we need to, want to keep in mind. That's it?
Thank you very much. They're very informative. And yes, uh, due to those wildfires, they're already reaching the east coast and causing some issues out there as far as, uh, the air quality. So that's affecting them. Right now, we're not affected because of the flow of the wind, the, the jet stream. But possibilities are there, and that's why it's very important also to watch our own backyard about fires. Okay, Ms. Curry?
Um, thanks, everybody. Those, those are great discussions and fantastic reports.
Hey, thank you, man. And it was a good meeting. You know, we agreed and disagreed, but in the final, we back together again, as, as Rick said, and we elected to serve the city and the country here to do the right thing. Uh, so again, want to thank the council for that. And everyone have a good evening and we're going to executive session.
Mayor, before y'all go into executive session, I needed to bring a couple of points to your attention. Uh, and I've checked on this with the Texas Attorney General's Office, uh, open meetings lawyers. And you can note on the executive session, when you say pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one of the government code, consultation with attorney, that is the provision that protects the city council when you go into a closed session from otherwise going into an illegal closed session. And so when you go into an executive session, you need to go into the executive session with the city attorney, me. Now, also, the issue is who could, who else could attend the executive session? For instance, the executive session number one is the discussion of the Alpine Police Department internal investigation. Well, I'm checking with the Attorney General's Office. If, if, if you're dealing with a person in executive session, that person should be there. So if you're dealing with the Alpine Police Department, it would be proper for Chief Martin to attend the executive session. But you would not allow other staff members, for instance, the city secretary, not attend an executive session unless the executive session is directed at her. She's the object of the executive session. And then finally, when y'all go into the second executive session item, discussion of municipal prosecutor, I submitted a letter to the, all of y'all today because under five five one point oh seven four, if the person that you're going to discuss requests that the matter be heard in open session, y'all are required to hold it in open session. So I request that the executive session number two not be held, that it be held in open session for the discussion regarding the municipal prosecutor and city attorney.
Okay, sir. So you wish to remove it from executive session and put it into the regular general session, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. All right, then, I guess I didn't have to do that for you, sir.
So, 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 Mr. Mayor, since I'm the one who proposed both of these items into an executive session, I would propose that city council adjourn from the public session and go into executive session to cover the item of discussion of the Alpine Police Department internal investigation related to the recent case in the media, that we exclude the city attorney and that we not cover item number two.
Okay.
Once again, I'll point out that to exclude the city attorney takes away your reason to have the executive session because the executive session, as you know from your notice, is to consult with the city attorney.
In, in this case, we're consulting on with the district attorney.
You're, the, the, it's for, on a matter for which it is the duty of the city attorney. You, you consult with the city attorney. I have a, I have an attorney-client privilege with y'all, and that's the reason we're able to go into executive session.
I, I understand that, okay? If you'd like us to just cancel the meeting, we'll redo a special meeting to exclude you. We do not need the city attorney in this discussion.
I'm just telling you what the Attorney General and what the Open Meetings Act says. If you go into an executive session to discuss matters with the city attorney, the city attorney is supposed to attend.
So the city council has the ability to appoint special counsel and exclude the city attorney. If you would like us to appoint a special counsel, we will do that and exclude you from executive session at a future meeting.
That's, that's the wish of the council. I'm just telling you that the.
I understand.
The last two meetings, y'all have had executive sessions excluding me from it, and you can't have closed sessions without the lawyer.
Okay.
That violates the Open Meetings Act.
I, I, Rod, I understand exactly what you're saying, okay? We will not go into executive session. Council will decide on its own whether to get special counsel or not, and that does not require you.
All right.
Okay, and that's according to Texas law. And that's according to the city charter.
Wait, okay, okay, so we get a council, another attorney for us for executive session?
So I would propose that the city council adjourn at this point, and we will call a special meeting for the future.
I'll second.
Been made and seconded. Any more discussion on this? Okay, we will not have an exec session till further notice. And so, or I will ask an, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Now I think you've already got the motion.
Okay, motion, it's second.
Second.
Okay, been seconded. Any discussion? The meeting is adjourned.